Welcome Professor Fennel Smith. Good afternoon, Dr. Fletcher, Ms. Tavar, Mr. Murillo. So we've had this robust conversation all morning. Welcome back everyone. We've had this robust conversation this morning about the national context and history of how we got where we are and then a really fantastic session from the San Jose State Ethnic Studies Program about our colonial history and our settler history and how that impacts equity and DEI today. Now I am really excited to welcome this group. We're doing a different kind of panel today. So rather than just me asking questions, I gave the group these instructions to please prepare, prepare just one slide, only one. And they have 10 minutes each to discuss how they believe anti-DEI legislation in other states affects their role and what can we learn from California's history to safeguard diversity efforts. Again, please excuse me, I'm not well, so that is me crunching on a cough drop in the background, apologies. I'm going to introduce all of them and then I'll just have them go in order that you see here. First, Ray Murillo is a Student Affairs professional with 30 years of experience. Currently, he serves as the Interim Assistant Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Equity and Belonging in the Division of Academic and Student Affairs at the California State University Office of the Chancellor. His experience also includes being the Systemwide Director for Student Affairs Programs at the CSU Office of the Chancellor, Director of Student Services Center in the College of Education and Integrative Studies at Cal Poly Pomona, Assistant Dean for Student Affairs in the College of Business and Economics at Cal State Fullerton, and Director of the Multicultural Center at California State University Dominguez Hills. Ray currently serves on the Mathematics Engineering Science and Achievement Intersegmental Advisory Committee, and he was a founding board member of the California Council of Cultural Centers and Higher Education. He is a clear product of the CSU system and also has an undergraduate degree in Chicano, Latino Studies from Cal State Long Beach and a master's degree in Legal Studies from the Colleges of Law in Santa Barbara and Ventura. Professor Kitzel Fennel Smith is a librarian and faculty member at CSU East Bay. Professor Fennel Smith is a critical race practitioner, and I hope that she tells you more about that, who works with students from across the campus and liaises specifically with students, staff, and faculty in the Ethnic Studies, Education, and Social Work Departments. She currently serves as Academic Senate Vice Chair and as the Diversity and Equity Liaison Officer and Chair of the Faculty Diversity and Equity Committee of the CSU East Bay Academic Senate. Thank you for being here, Professor Fennel Smith. Dr. Sean Fletcher is an Assistant Professor at San Jose State University, as well as the Principal Consultant for Sean Fletcher Diversity Training. Dr. Fletcher serves, also serves as Board Chair for Diversity and Inclusion for Public Relations Society of America, Silicon Valley. He's also an Advisory Board Member for the Institute for the Study of Sports Society and Social Change. He's a Faculty Diversity Committee Member, Vice Chair of the San Jose State Athletics Board, and Tri-Chair for the Task Force to Implement the CSU Black Students' Success Report at San Jose State. Prior to joining San Jose State, Dr. Fletcher led the Internal Communications Team at Apple Rita Learning and Development in Cupertino, as well as the Volkswagen Group of America in Washington DC. And finally, Yehaira Tovar is a seasoned leader in academic support services known for her commitment to fostering equitable outcomes for marginalized students and championing the success of all students. During her tenure at Cerritos Community College, Yehaira played a pivotal role in assisting historically underrepresented students as a financial aid administrator, foster youth program coordinator, and academic advisor. Transitioning to Cal State Fullerton, Yehaira spearheaded scholar programs dedicated to advancing the academic success of underrepresented student populations. Her leadership was instrumental in driving initiatives aligned with graduation initiative 2025 and creating equitable scholarship opportunities. I'm proud to say that she works with me in her current role as the Managing Director of the Lurie College of Education and College of Health and Human Sciences Student Success Centers. She leads advising teams of staff to support the university's retention and equity goals and the students' personal and academic goals. Please welcome everyone. And then we're going to ask that our panelists who are not presenting to turn off your cameras and we're going to start with Mr. Murillo. Murillo, excuse me.
That's fine, the pronunciation of the last name, I'll get to that in a minute. So thanks for the invitation to talk and I will be focusing more on the California history and the CSU history in regards to the anti, rather than specifically the anti-DEI legislation that's occurring in other states, but I will wrap up with that towards the end to comment on that. But first, I want to focus on more of a reflection on just the content really of the topic of today, which is the 70th anniversary of Brown versus the Board of Education. You know, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. advocated for civil disobedience to protest unjust laws as one's moral responsibility. In his Letter from Birmingham Jail, Dr. King addresses criticism that he encourages the breaking of some laws while abiding to other laws. Dr. King makes an important distinction in that he supports obeying the 1954 Supreme Court decision on Brown versus the Board of Education because it is morally right, aligned with natural law, and disobeying ordinances on segregation since they are morally wrong. I want to note the importance of the methods judges use to interpret the law. There is a formalist belief that laws should be simply followed as written because it was adopted under the proper legislative process and apply previous rules, case precedent. In Plessy versus Ferguson, the court used a formalist approach and the case precedent to continue to justify segregation. There is a legal realist belief that allows for the interpretation of the wording in statutes and previous court opinions to come to a different outcome. For example, in 1947, as previously discussed this morning, the Mendez versus Westminster School District case is important as it set precedents in later court cases such as the Brown versus Board of Education. During the two-week trial, the Mendez family attorney, David Marcus, took a legal realist approach of presenting social science evidence to support his arguments that segregation resulted in feelings of inferiority among Mexican-American children that could undermine their ability to be productive Americans. The US Supreme Court decision in Brown versus Board of Education in 1954 reversed the rule established by Plessy versus Ferguson by ruling that separate cannot be equal. In doing so, the court did not solely rely on previous court decisions, but also reviewed the evidence from social scientists that demonstrated separate but equal in the schools had adverse effects on black students. In my opinion, the criteria that judges should use in determining unjust laws is to first review if the law violates the US Constitution and more importantly, review evidence beyond the law from research by psychologists, sociologists, and other social scientists. If the latter had not been done, then Plessy versus Ferguson may have never been overturned since the case precedents pointed to maintain segregation. This legal approach underpins the importance, the important role university scholars have in producing the necessary research to address issues of discrimination, inequity, and bias. But I also want to import, you were talking about something that 70 years ago, it's not that long ago. I want to mention, you know, even in 70 years, my own family had, has impact on this in the segregation and discriminatory practice or still felt today. So my father grew up in Artesia, California, which is right here, not, I live in Whittier tonight, it's in Southern California, not far from Cerritos, Long Beach, and also very, not far from Westminster for that matter. When he was going to school in the 40s and the 50s, he was not allowed to speak Spanish. Even when he pronounced our last name correctly, Murillo, he was punished and suspended. As a result, my family and I grew up pronouncing our last name as Murillo. My mom, moving from Texas, had similar experiences, so it was no surprise that my brothers and I, as well as all of our first cousins, were not taught Spanish because of our parents' experiences that made them believe it would be a disadvantage in our school system. So the impact is still being felt today, even though we're talking about this from a very historical perspective and there are still individuals that have actually experienced segregated schools. Looking at the system for a minute historically and how it has come to what it is today and supporting the students and also the faculty, staff, and administrators of color on our campuses. So early on, we have to remember also that the CSU system is also not that old as well. It was established in 1963. So as a system, even though many of our campuses outdate our system, the system itself was established in 63. Growing out of the Civil Rights Movement in the 1960s, the Educational Opportunity Program and Ethnic Studies were demanded by students to ensure access for students of color. Some campuses were piloting EOP, but there was not a system-wide commitment to establish a program on each CSU campus. In California, the legislature generally has been supportive of efforts supporting underserved communities. A California State Senator, John L. Harmer, excuse me, supported Senate Bill 1072, the College Educational Opportunity Programs, that established an EOP program on each CSU campus and authorized the EOP grant. From the next decades moving forward, we also saw movement in a push on multiculturalism. So throughout the years, there have been movements to continue to push for equal space in the university for students, faculty, staff, and administrators of color. Multiculturalism in the late 1980s and early 1990s caused a strong focus on diversity education to acknowledge the contributions of people of color. Multicultural centers, cross-cultural centers were developed to provide cultural programming and forums on campuses, but the centers were still created out of protest and student demand. In the curriculum, Ethnic Studies Departments at the time advocated for general education requirements to teach the US ethnic experience. What was developed were interdisciplinary courses that did not always include ethnic studies. I'm speaking through a Student Affairs lens when addressing social justice education, but I want to acknowledge the critical role academic programs have in research, teaching, and the general knowledge of a particular subject. Case in point, as you saw in my bio that you heard, I also have an undergraduate degree in Chicano-Latino Studies, which really has shaped, one, created a sense of belonging at Long Beach State, but also shaped how I view my work and approach the work as well. There are intentional Student Affairs programming when it comes to social justice education, co-curricular, and out of the classroom, focused on raising awareness on societal issues and issues encountered by students, that is discrimination and bias based on ethnicity, gender identity, sexual identity, immigration status, among other classified, protected classifications. The programs are critical dialogues that teach us about ourselves and peers who, and about our peers who have different backgrounds and experiences from our own, but still by and large focuses on the individual. More recently now, in our talk and discussion and development of program support services for equity, focus on equity and belonging, you know, I want to mention that there are two ways to serve students at the institution. One, change the student to fit the institution, or change the institution to fit the student. Now, we have to acknowledge, historically, higher education has focused on changing the student to fit the institution. And for me, the equity and belonging efforts are to focus on making the institutions ready for the students it is serving. This is the work towards having students feel a sense of belonging through creating community, programming that reflects student identities, curriculum that reflects student experiences, and assessing administrative processes and barriers. So what is the key takeaway for me? In California, the legislature has been supportive in ensuring space for students of color by establishing programs like EOP. Students who are undocumented, we have AB 540. We have legislation that supports foster youth in regards to priority for establishing centers as well as priority for housing. And also legislation that supports students encountering basic needs challenges. Also, more recently, students with dependents and students who were formally incarcerated. In addition, it also mandated an Ethnic Studies requirement, although the Ethnic Studies Departments have been pushing for this since the late 80s, as I mentioned earlier. I'm sure I missed other legislative efforts that create a diverse and supportive environment on our campuses. However, I caution us not to take California for granted that it will be supportive in all efforts. The residents of California did pass Prop 209 with the belief that students of color were taking something away from white students in admission practices and resources. The federal government and agencies do have an impact on California. With the presidential election coming in November, there is the possibility of a White House administration change that may bring a perspective that does not support the current efforts on diversity, inclusion, and equity, and may mimic or mirror many of the other state efforts in this regard. And important significant, as important and significant as Brown versus Board of Education is in ending segregation and working towards equal access to education, I hope to pick, I hope you picked up on, from me and the presenters this morning, that change does not happen automatically and that we still need to advocate for what is morally right. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Dr. Murillo. Appreciate it.
It's not doctor, but I appreciate the promotion. It's okay.
Sir, thank you very much. I'm Kitzel Fennel Smith as introduced. I'm an academic librarian. I've been in community colleges, CUNY and the CSU for more than 30 years. And I took the charge of this prompt rather directly in terms of looking at my own history in academia. When I was an undergraduate in the 80s, people were reading Audre Lorde, poet, warrior, lesbian, librarian. And one of the things that has really stuck with me from her philosophy is what tools are we using? How do we approach the task of making the institution moral, if it can be? How do we make institution, the institutions we work in accessible and nurturing for everyone who comes there? So I believe that we work in an environment where we are rationing access to the economy through our educational systems. And this is something I start off my first-year seminars. We have, for many years, I taught in a program for first-year students at East Bay where they took a series of courses together and I taught a research course. And one of the founding questions in that course was around their positionality in the educational system. So I had first-year students who had gotten through high school and attained A to G. They are, of course, only 56% of the high school graduates in California manage that. And it depends so much for the student on the situation of the school district and the high school that they're in. So we would talk about their educational journey, how they came in and what they had learned from their experiences in K to 12. Segregation, I feel, is still very real in California and as Dr. Cotton said this morning, it's really based in a taxation scheme that funds the schools. So if you are in a well-funded district, obviously you have access to a lot of things that you may not have in in a lower-funded district. Another thing that I would point to in terms of the rationing process is the way that schooling systems use testing and sorting to determine who has access to, maybe it's AP, maybe it's just algebra, which is, can be formative in terms of what you can do if you get to college, when you get to college. And those systems are often unexamined. I would argue that at our CSU campuses, we also use testing and sorting mechanisms to determine where students start their education and what courses they take. Remediation has gotten some attention from the Assembly of late, in particular in directing the community colleges not to enroll students in courses that are not credit-bearing, not college-credit-bearing. But there are a variety of ways that remediation does still happen, both in the community colleges and the CSU. And there are also a variety of remedies for remediation. I would point to the California Acceleration Project, which is an organization started by a couple of community college faculty looking at how we can alter our curriculum in order to help our students succeed. So I really appreciated what Ray Murillo just said about do we change the student or do we change the institution? And these, there are a number of efforts underway around changing the institution. If we find that two-thirds of the students can't get through the class, perhaps we should pay attention to what's happening in the class and how we can alter that so that students can in fact succeed. Cultural taxation is where parents, students, communities are required to do additional work to make the schooling systems humane. I would argue that belongingness is a part of this framework. If you feel you belong, maybe you will not experience the same cultural taxation that perhaps you experienced in your K to 12 process. And then the last item on rationing for me is zero-sum grading. Again, I appreciated how Dr. Cotton spoke about zero-sum rationing of other things. Zero-sum grading is a process where we have already decided that not everyone will succeed. Early in my educational journey, I attended a conference at Alverno College in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. It was a Catholic college. And I was learning about assessment and grading. It was run by a group of nuns. And they introduced me to something, my first year as an academic librarian that has stuck with me, which is they refuse to sort their students. They were committed to being certain that every single student would succeed in their institution and they arranged their assessment processes, their evaluation processes to make sure that that happens. Let's see, okay, so what are our challenges in diversity, equity, inclusion, justice, and accessibility? So many challenges. As noted early on, we, as a society, owe a great educational debt to lots of folks who have been unfairly taxed or pushed out or not allowed into education systems that serve them well. I would argue that educational malpractice is real and we have a responsibility as educators to identify it and to, to attempt to remedy it. I would also say that we have heard a lot today on educational trauma and that is another piece of taxation that people carry with them. I think a lot about Sarah Lawrence Lightfoot's essay, Ghosts in the Classroom, where she talks about how when parents come into classrooms, they bring their generational trauma of education with them and that this impacts their interactions with the teachers and the schools. I also think a lot about what Michael Dumas, he's an education faculty member at Cal, says about how he learned about critical theory at the age of seven. His mother explained to him that because he was a black boy, some white teachers would assume that he was less intelligent and that they would pay more attention and find fault in his behavior. And she was schooling him in how to deal with the school, in fact, how to deal with the cultural taxation she anticipated he would experience. Okay, intellectual freedom, and this was actually mentioned a couple of times. And I have, I have had so many students tell me that Ethnic Studies courses were foundational to their educational success because they saw themselves reflected and they felt empowered by what they learned there. Intellectual freedom is the idea, and this comes from librarianship, that people have the right to learn and know whatever they wish to pursue. And I would argue that a kind of segregated curriculum does not allow intellectual freedom for all people. I'm going to talk a little bit about the critical race theory tenants that I use in my work and just close out with K to 12 Ethnic Studies. So there are three tenants of critical race theory that I think about a lot. One of them is whiteness as property. And this is the idea that our systems defend the relative value of whiteness by excluding other peoples or from public institutions, from, we heard about, real estate taxation earlier. And when I think about education and the fact that we ration access to education, I believe that this is in fact supporting the property value of whiteness and excluding others from education. Also, the value of the, valuing the lived experience of people and communities of color. We've heard several times today about belongingness and the way in which Ethnic Studies curriculum helps students see theirs, find a place in the academy and learn about not only their own communities but others in a formal sense. And then the last critical race tenant that I use quite often is something called interest convergence. And this is the idea that when we make policy moves, or for example, in the case of Brown v. Board of Education, when things change in terms of formal policy, it will be continually worked on to turn it to the value of supporting whiteness as property essentially. So those three tenants are part of how I view what's happening in academics, whether it's in K to 12 or in, on my own campus. I see I'm out of time, so I'm going to be very succinct here at the end. We are having ongoing conversations about what Ethnic Studies will look like in California in K to 12. There is a model Ethnic Studies curriculum that has been passed through the State Education Department. There have been a lot of conversations about what will be included and what will not be included. There is a cooperative of K to 12 educators who are working in a group on liberated Ethnic Studies and they are looking at how to take the activist section of Ethnic Studies and use that in K to 12, how to apply those activist ideas in K to 12. These arguments are ongoing and I think that the CSU has a lot to say here because we are going to be, well, we have teacher certification programs and I am assuming that many of those students who go through our certification programs will teach Ethnic Studies across K to 12, so we have a pretty high investment. I also mentioned on my slide the La Raza program in Tucson, which actually was continually attacked and eventually outlawed by the Arizona Legislature. And I would argue that this is an example of how incredibly powerful K to 12 Ethnic Studies can be and what a benefit to our students and their families and communities. I have three interventions I would like to share. And these are tied to the critical race theory tenants I mentioned. Students know a great deal. Their lived experiences are the wealth that they bring to campus. And sometimes all that is really needed is help in interpreting what you already know to the academic environment. In working with first-year students, one of the exercises we would do very early is what is everything you were told about coming to college and being successful? And I would have the students share their knowledge and they had, they made many connections between what they learn from their families and their communities and what they know about, I mean, already they had graduated from high school with A to G, so they had succeeded, and how to work that in the academic environment and bring that forward. The second one is that I believe that we have a responsibility to act as agents of the state as, as that we owe educational redress. Gloria Ladson Billings wrote a really well-known piece on education debt. I think we also owe a redress for educational trauma. And I think that when you approach your work as an educator as if you have a responsibility for redress and to redress those things that have happened in the past, it changes your perspective on your work and your relationships and interactions with students. And then the last piece, and this is quite controversial, I have to say, there has been some conversation about ungrading in K to 12. But I do believe that our grading systems ration access and we really need to examine how we evaluate students and how our grading systems maintain the white, the property value of whiteness and the The white, the property value of whiteness and the status quo. So uh that is what I have for you today. Thank you so much. And I will pass it to whomever is next up. There we go.
That is me. Fantastic job. Thank you. And and thank you all um for for having me. It is so inspiring to listen to my colleagues on the panel, but but also the entire conversation that's being had. And you'll notice and and I won't go through, because Dr. Goward kind of gave my long-winded bio. So I won't go through all of that, but I I will, I will sort of start and and a little bit about myself, just for for context. Uh, I am an educator by trade, but I spent the majority of my career working within the corporate sector. Uh, in an applied science, I teach an applied science right now within public relations. But I also do a a quite a bit uh of my workload is around discussing topics of equity and inclusion. Specifically dealing with race and gender equity within sport as well as society. And you'll see the image that is on it, and I'll borrow a a a bit of what Ray mentioned, but also Kaizo as well. Um, you'll see on on the slide, but also you'll see over my my right shoulder. And and I didn't use the the backdrop for dramatic effect or anything like that. I I did want you to see um the the famous Norman Rockwell painting of Ruby Bridges. Uh, Ruby Bridges, again, she was born only four months after Brown v Board of Education was enacted. And uh, six years after that, she became the first African American student to attend an all-white elementary school. In Southern United States, when she did so at William Franz Elementary School in New Orleans. And to borrow a a a talking point from Ray, um, this isn't a previous uh centuries old tale. That we're telling about black history, uh Ruby Bridges is younger than my parents. Ruby Bridges is sixty-nine, will be seventy years old. Coincidentally, the exact anniversary of Brown v Board of Education that we're commemorating now. A- a- as much as many would have you to believe, and I get in my emails and DMs and so on and so forth. We we do not live in a post-racial society. As much as many would have us to believe, and it continues to show itself within education. It shows itself within the corporate sector that I oftentimes uh still work within, but also left uh. Partially as a byproduct of a sense of of belonging, a sense of othering, a sense of not being seen and heard. As a result of many of uh i- within California even, many of the the less than uh concrete and intentional. Efforts for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So as as part of the subtopic and subtext of our time today, while we live in a democratic controlled state. And I do not want to make it political, but for certain subjects, we must get political because the proof is in what we see. Even within the state of of California, there's work to be done, democratic-controlled historically state. So I I say all that to to say this, Ruby Bridges and others, they are representations. That uh centuries of radical and intentional systems of oppression and suppression cannot be met as we continue to see. With simply race-neutral initiatives. Because we saw race and gender for over four hundred years. That largely got us into the state that we're in right now, across various uh marginalized and disenfranchised identities. So what you'll see on the slide that I prepared, there are a number of different initiatives that have either impacted my work directly or indirectly. Whether it be as an instructor in the classroom, whether it be as someone who has felt the cultural tax. I feel you completely, Kaizo, is what you were mentioning. Uh, of feeling like I need to take and shoulder the burden and representation of black people on my campus or elsewhere. All outside of campus as well, I feel quite a bit of that burden. And within my field, because I'm in communication, because I'm in in applied science, I teach that. Our students come to us and to me in order for us to be a conduit, not to more education, but to a job. Okay, so the legislation that takes place across this country impacts them. But I will say this in particular, and I see it in my classroom as well. Even though legislation may have state boundaries, ideologies do not. And I'm sure many of you all have felt that. I'm sure many of you all have seen that in your classrooms amongst your colleagues, even within the state of California. That are not bound by some of these more egregious uh legislations that have been passed. In particular, some that you see on the slide here. So I completely know what it feels like to not feel as though you're included, to not feel as though the system is even working towards inclusion. Whether it be within academia or within the corporate world, I know what it feels like to be one of the nine percent. Of the hundreds of thousands of Apple employees when I was there. I will go weeks without seeing someone who culturally felt familiar, because it's not simply about skin color. I know what it it feels like to be less than five percent on your campus and try to champion. Us moving forward and try to galvanize a less than six percent population of African American students on a campus. I also conversely, because I I completed my doctorate degree from Howard University, know what utopia somewhat feels like as well. To feel seen and to feel heard. And I also know what it means to step off that canvas and now feel like you have been hit with reality, that the world doesn't look how perhaps it should. So from that vantage point, when you look at some of these uh restricting DEI programs on college campuses. Um, eighty-two anti-DEI bills have been proposed since twenty twenty-three. It's not that long ago. And according to the Chronicle of Higher Education, anti-DEI bills targeting college programs have been introduced in twenty-eight states. As well as in Congress since the same time period. And when we move into many of the subject matters that I either discuss. Or that have precluded me from working with certain peers and colleagues on other campuses. Or even having certain conversations within mine, because remember. In a social scientific discipline, ideologies still reign supreme, even if we're not restricted by anti-DEI policies. Within the state of California. So when when you see that since twenty seventeen, there have been dozens of states that have enacted over a hundred and ten laws and policies reshaping. The teaching of race, racism, sexual orientation, and gender identity. According to the same outlet, these new rules now affect how three-quarters of the nation's students learn about topics. Ranging from the role of slavery in American history to the lives of non-binary people. Then obviously, a- and and Florida could have its own dedicated section, I'm pretty sure, of uh our time today. But we've seen many of the anti-DEI policies that have been in place. I also work within uh sport uh communication on our campus. I work with our athletes and they see what's going on across the athletic landscape as well. They see that transgender athletes are being discriminated against. They see that the legislation that is being passed isn't that far removed from them, even though they may differ ideologically in terms of participation. They bring those conversations to me and to others who are on the board. We're not immune to the conversations, even if they are being battled in other states. Also, uh, when we move through understanding similar bills that are limiting classroom discussions even on race and racism. I I notice when my classroom tone and tenor changes. I know when it's difficult for me to find less-than-watered-down texts. Or to find uh conversations that are being had within some of the materials that I I use within the classroom. But also outside of the classroom with the equity and inclusion work that I do within corporations. Also, there are laws that are restricting teaching even about race. I put on here, just so you know, a twenty twenty-one Texas law forbids teaching that slavery and racism are anything other than deviations from betrayals of. Or failures to live up to the authentic, as they say, founding principles of the United States. Which include liberty and equality, end quote. And oftentimes I have the opportunity to to speak to the media on behalf of the university about many of these particular issues. And I I receive feedback, not simply from external folks, I receive feedback from peers and colleagues as well. That don't always align with what you would think the prevailing sentiment would be of a state like California, who is not bound. By the anti-DEI legislation, again, ideology has no boundaries. So the work that we are seeing that we say needs to be done potent- potentially outside of the state of California also. There's work to be done within the state of California as well. There's also, again, bans on diversity training and DEI initiatives. Um, there are restrictions, and this is something that hit close to home, and this shouldn't be new. But uh, certain legislations that restricted affirmative action. That I'll I'll call you back to what I mentioned earlier, in terms of the intentionality. To suppress and oppress that led us to seeing such disparate numbers of representation within institutions. But also uh across industries, whether it be corporate or nonprofit or others. The 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 hot-button debate that continues, that rages on around. The 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 measures that are allowed to be taken in order to take an equally intentional remedy. That sees the race, that sees gender, that sees the marginalized, historically uh oppressed identities that led us to. The disrespect that we are in, you see things like Prop two oh nine within California. That in in nineteen ninety-six became a very controversial vote to ban race-conscious affirmative action policies in the state's public universities. And then since then, eight other states also adopted that. And we're seeing that even within the the work that we're doing on our campuses to try to uh to uh uh gain better representation. Not just uh for faculty, but staff and certainly within our student population. I'm part of a task force that's doing that work now, trying to investigate some of the work that can be done. To recruit and retain and create a sense of belonging amongst our black faculty and staff. There are actual measures even within the state of California that perhaps are making it just a little bit more difficult in order for us to do that. Again, a system that used race to exclude cannot necessarily be remedied in my mind by not seeing it equally as intentional. So to 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 wrap things up a bit, um, the way that I see to address the latter portion of the prompt. What lessons can we learn from California's history to safeguard these diversity efforts? I think, again, if even if we don't want to get political, I think we have to, we have to stay vigilant against these rollbacks. We have to protect the the hard-fought progress that my peers who spoke before me and who uh will speak after me talked about. In terms of the ongoing advocacy and political engagement, we have to address the systemic barriers that we are seeing. Policies and passing policies aren't enough, we have to tackle the root causes of these inequalities as well. And lastly, I believe in order to preserve the work that has been done within California, I I say this quite a bit. And I'll wrap up uh with a a quick quote from a peer from Ohio State University, but something I I I say quite a bit. Um, even within the state of California and many states and municipalities who are doing fantastic work around equity and inclusion. To move this work forward inside our institutions as well as outside of it. Still to this day, the, in my mind, the greatest threat, the most urgent threat to equity and inclusion work is the performance. Performative DEI is what we see when there really is no intentional and concerted effort to actually enact change. We saw a lot of that post George Floyd, I saw a lot of that in my consulting business, I saw a lot of that across campuses as well. There are a number of of data points that also speak to that as well. Many of the hirings that were done post George Floyd, they're no longer employed. And there are, there are are a a whole suite of data that support that taking place, the performance. A professor at Ohio State University, as I close, Monica Cox said. At its best, the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion can yield transformative organizational outcomes. But at its worst, DEI work can devolve into a series of performative platitudes that erode trust. And disappear once public pressure subsides. As we move forward, the work has to be intentional, the work has to be sustaining, and the work has to be invested in, whether inside the classroom or out. Apologies for going over a bit, but uh I appreciate you listening.
Thank you so much, Dr. Fletcher. That was quite inspirational. Uh, so again, my name is Yahira Tovar, I'm a managing director uh uh for the Student Success Centers. In College of Education and Health and Human Sciences at San Jose State University. I am a first-generation in college student, uh, the daughter of farming parents uh from Sonora in Mitroca, Mexico. Uh, my parents migrated to South Central Los Angeles, which is where I grew up. So I thought I would give you, uh, provide you a little bit about me, my educational experiences. Because I think those experiences is what has led me to my career in a higher education. And it sparked my passion for the work in diversity, equity, inclusion, and accessibility. So I'm about to give out a little bit of my age, but here we go. During K through twelve, I can share that, you know, when we started school, my brothers and I started school. Uh, we were certainly excluded from regular education, we were actually taken out of school, out of certain classes. Because we spoke Spanish, even though I spoke English, I was tracked into special education. I experienced punishment for speaking Spanish in my school by professors. I had to change the pronunciation of my name because I was not allowed to roll my Rs as I would in Spanish. In high school, my experiences were no better. I was the student that had too many questions, but but was silenced. I asked, why are schools in my community looking more and more like prisons? How am I passing courses when no one has shown up to even teach us? And why am I not being tracked for college? Of the messages that I did get from my high school teachers is the constant reminder. That we would somehow end up in the jail being built in my neighborhood. I landed in a community college by accident, which is where I met my mentor, Dr. Philip Rodriguez. He spoke Spanish, he identified as Mexican, he looked like someone in my family, like a tio. That would certainly understand the challenges I was I was experiencing in college. And who later helped me understand the immense exclusion, discrimination, and oppression that I experienced during K to twelve. In an effort to explore and reclaim and reclaim my identity as a Mexican woman. I received an associate's degree in Chicano Chicano Studies. And Dr. Rodriguez's leadership on campus and his ability to see me as a whole person inspired me. And led me to where I am today in my career. So in the past twenty years, I have dedicated myself to building student support service programs that increase accessibility, equity, and inclusiveness. Including showing up for students in a manner that supports their success and ensuring they feel seen, heard, and valued. As I witnessed the dismantling of DEI in other states like Texas and Florida. It is clear that it's aimed at the black, indigenous, and people of color and the LGBTQIA communities. And it certainly impacts me and the work I currently do. Dismantling DEI on campuses conveys to students. That make our campus diverse, that they are not worth fighting for and protecting. And so I truly believe it's important for me to pay attention to what's taking place in our nation and learn. How other campuses are approaching the dismantling of DEI. I have to be prepared for the possible future without formal DEI practices. I have to be prepared for the possible future without formal DEI practices. So what are some of the lessons that I am learning? Well, what I can see is that there is going to be immense loss. And some of those losses, those losses are definitely going to impact our students, staff, faculty, and the work that I do. Some of those losses include the loss of incredible staff that are in DEI positions that also look like our students of historically underrepresented populations. There will be loss of programs that are focused on creating sense of belonging, access to higher education, retention, and graduation. Visibility of historically underrepresented students, faculty, staff would be lost. The ability to talk to someone about DEI and feel a sense of safety on campus. And potentially walking through a campus and having our students walk through campuses that might be unhealthy for them. It'll certainly impact the access, access and persistence of students. So advocating for diversity, equity, and inclusion and accessibility is important. Now, California is certainly safeguarding DEI work. I think in several ways, it has demonstrated commitment to inclusivity through policies that promote diversity, equity, and higher education. However, as we've already heard, there are legislatures that are still impacting access to post-secondary education for many. It is important to advocate and also raise awareness about the true meaning of DEI. There is still a lot of false information about DEI. People don't truly understand its value. And although we might not have laws that hinder DEI fully, there is still overt and covert bias, prejudice, discrimination, and oppression on our campuses. And with the impending elections are just around the corner, DEI is certainly at risk in California. So what is happening in other seasons is certainly a reminder for me that I need to pay close attention. And it certainly strengthens my commitment to DEI work. And it takes me back to my why. As I mentioned earlier, my educational experiences, the things that I learned early in my career and that I have learned through the experiences of students, that is my why. And so my why, remembering my why has served as a guiding compass for DEI work. It has helped me make decisions and prioritize my actions. It gives me a sense of direction so I can align my efforts with initiatives revolving around DEI work. Now, DEI work also means that I have to live its values. It's an integral part of my work. And this means that I have to pay close attention in how I interact with students, faculty, and staff. For students specifically, it requires me to think in equitable ways when supporting, coaching, and advising students, which also requires me to think about students beyond what they need, but who they are. And this means supporting students from an asset-based perspective. And stop looking at students' needs and gaps in a negative, in a negative manner. And instead, focus on identifying their strengths and assets that can help students navigate the educational system. Something else that I have to keep in mind is being culturally responsive, learning about various cultures, their experiences, languages, and traditions, celebrating and validating who students are. Because at the end of the day, what students and people need is, do we see them? Do we hear them? And do we value them? It's going to require ongoing investment of my time into my own learning and thoughtfulness and sensitivity. Also, in supporting students, you know, anything that's connected to DEI, I have to consider that students need to be supported holistically, which is not, not only does it include providing wraparound services, but caring holistically, which means providing support to the whole person. Advocating for students is another important part of DEI work. For students that are still experiencing situations that are discriminatory or oppressive. So we have to be willing to name it and take action. Now, engaging in DEI work with or without the title is still, you know, it's still my responsibility. DEI work can't be left to the folks with the title only. I am responsible for living and practicing the values of diversity, equity, and inclusion, even if I don't have the title. I have to take the initiative to read books, journals, and articles that continue to inform my work in student success, explore data from the, from the equity lens. I also have to be willing to put myself in spaces where I can continue to expand my knowledge and begin to share with other professionals about what I'm learning and practicing. I think for a long time, I didn't feel like I was a DEI expert. And, and I still don't presume to know everything, but what I do have is 20-plus years of higher education professional experience and my own personal experiences outside of my work. And so I have engaged in DEI work for several years, but it just wasn't named previously. So what does this mean for me? I have to be willing to learn, to lean into the vulnerabilities revolving around DEI work. You know, that when I lean into this type of work, I know that there could be fears of making mistakes, saying the wrong thing, leaving something out, or just not knowing how to respond. But also understanding that these are the opportunities for growth. There's also the fear of stepping into politics, as we heard from Dr. Fletcher. You know, I grew up in a household where my parents, they were not citizens or residents. And so stepping into politics was a big no-no in my household because our family needed to stay invisible for our safety. But today, I have to be willing to step into politics and find the courage to do so and educate myself around these things. On the other hand, we have to be willing to give grace and receive grace. The work of DEI is challenging, but very necessary. And as one of my dear colleagues recently reminded me, is that it doesn't take an expert to value DEI work. Apply the principle of equity, be inclusive. Help faculty, staff, and students feel like they belong. It just takes someone who is well. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our leaders in the, in the CSU for sharing their thoughts this afternoon. I'm glad I did not get in the way of that. You all needed to hear what they had to say. If they have time, I hope they hang around for a bit. We're gonna jump to, it's about that time to jump to our students. But if we have some time, I want to pull the, the peddlers we just had back on the platform to have, answer some of you all's questions.